Okay.
I'll call the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors January 4th, 2016 meeting to order. Mr. Norvig's gonna lead us in invocation and Mr. Tucker's gonna lead us in the pledge.
Lord, we thank you for bringing us here safely and we pray for the safety of our first responders and our citizens as they go about their business and their lives here in Powhatan. We ask your great blessing on this new year of 2016. May it be the best ever for our community. May we be healthy, happy, safe, and do good things to each other and move forward. And, Lord, a special plea for those who are sick at this time that you would grant them healing. And we thank you again for the holiday season to mark a special occasion for many. And it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda is an election of the chairman. Is there any motion?
Ms. County Administrator, I nominate Bill Melton to be chairman.
A second. Clarification, on motions, are seconds required?
Not on this, there's not.
We have a motion in a second.
So there is a motion for Mr. Melton to be the chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstain?
Aye, abstain.
Motion carries four. Ayes, one nay, one abstain. Turn the meeting back over.
Thank you for your confidence.
The math doesn't, the math doesn't.
Pardon?
You said four ayes.
Four ayes, zero nays and one abstain.
I did not vote for myself. That's five people.
Four ayes, one nay, and one abstain.
No, four ayes, zero nays.
Zero nays.
Zero nays.
Okay, I thought you said one nay, okay.
One abstain.
Sometimes we can count, I hope.
Do we count the barking?
I heard that too. What is that?
Not that I'm aware of, David.
Well, I'm trying to get your votes, Bill.
At this time, we'll move on to the election of the vice chair. Do I have a nomination for a vice chair?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Larry Norvig as vice chair.
We don't need a second on that. Do we have any other nominations? There ain't none. Close the nominations. All in favor of Mr. Norvig for vice chairman?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
So we, motion passes four, zero, one. We'll now move on to resolution R. 2016-01, setting the Board of Supervisors' 2016 regular meeting schedule. It's on page four of your agenda. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve it as presented by the county administrator.
Any comments? I have a comment. Just for the public, we had, this calendar is gonna be a little different than one we've done in the past. We typically have met on the first Monday of the month. We're now gonna meet on the fourth Monday of the month. It gives us the ability to hear planning commission cases quicker because the planning commission would meet behind us. They will now meet in front of us and then we'll be able to move, meet the advertising criteria and be able to hear those cases much quicker than a month later. So, that was a suggestion from Mr. Altman and Ms. Wyler and we thought it was a wonderful idea.
As a resolution, it does require a second.
I'll second that motion. All in, can you get a roll call vote here?
I have to do a roll call, yep. Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Ms. Cabell?
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. We'll now move on to the adoption of the bylaws, which is found on page seven of your agenda. Any questions on the bylaws? We did make some changes in the bylaws that all of us have been, have discussed with the county administrator. Any of the changes are in red. I do appreciate everyone's participation in the comments on these.
Mr. Chairman, I've only got one suggestion.
Okay.
Where we say the chairman is authorized to keep the decorum of means, shouldn't that read "is responsible" or "shall"? Because the whole reason you have a chairman is to, you know, have decorum, is to keep the decorum.
No problem. I agree a hundred percent.
What's the reading?
David, can you, do you, can you reference just for the rest of us, make sure we're all on the same page? Do you know where it is in the?
It's on page seven.
Okay.
And it says, "The chairman shall be authorized to maintain order and decorum at all meetings." Is how the sentence stands.
Thank you.
Is that how you want it to stand?
No, no. What I want, "shall be authorized," to me, being chairman and keeping the decorum is synonymous. I think we'd all agree.
So we'll drop the two "authorize," just say "shall."
Yes.
And so, on page seven, where it says, "The chairman shall be authorized to maintain order and decorum at all meetings," it will read, "The chairman shall maintain order and decorum at all meetings."
Yes.
We're gonna delete "be authorized to."
Okay, yes. Mr. Chairman, do?
Any other cha, any other changes? Mr., in some counties, as I was doing some reading, there, if I missed this, I apologize, but it talked about the county attorney responsibility and being the sergeant-at-arms. Is that something that we did get, we added in, we talked about?
We added, parliamentarian, yes.
Okay.
The county administrator added a sentence at the end.
It's found on page sixteen, item number B.3.
I apologize for missing it. There it is. Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, with the one motion to change that one section, which has been captured by the county administrator, I move that we approve as presented otherwise.
I second. We have a motion in a second. Do not need a roll call on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Motion passes five, zero. We'll now move on to item number eight, request to postpone agenda items, add, delete, change the order of presentation. Do we have any motions to change, add, delete? And can we get a formal approval of the agenda?
Let's move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor of the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes five, zero. At this time, we have county admin, county attorney comments. Tom, do you have any comments at this time?
No comments.
Okay. At this time, we have a chairman's, chairman comment. I have one comment I wanna read. "At the November 2nd, 2015 Board of Supervisors' meeting, the county administrator presented an explanation of why a public hearing was not held prior to the board approving two resolutions amending the FY 2016 budget and capital project fund in June 2015. The public hearing was held on November 2nd and the board re-adopted and restated the two resolutions. County staffers received inquiries about a statement that Ms. Wyler made on November 2nd that no funds have been spent from the appropriation prior to November 2nd. The inquiries concern checks that were written prior to November 2nd for the lights at a practice field at a junior high school and a public works work order system. The county's appropriations are controlled at the fund level as per the policy adopted by the board with the resolution R. 2015-47, Section 5, and resolution R. 2015-61, Section 2. Checks that were written from the cap, capital projects fund between July 1st, 2015 and November 2nd, 2015 were within the $307,250 appropriation for the capital projects fund approved by the board with the adoption of the FY 2016 budget." Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes. If you're an individual, five minutes if you're a group. This form is not a criticism or a tax on staff or any persons. It is not a form for political campaigning or promoting a business. Please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter over which this board has responsibility and please keep your comments to three minutes as an individual, five minutes a group. Thank you, sir. Come on.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here and give my public comment. My issue is the new trash ordinance. I have some neighbors.
Name, can you give me your name and address?
Yes, I'm John Walters, 2400 Morningview Drive.
Thank you, sir.
I've been out here in that neighborhood about nine years. We raised our family. Powhatan's a wonderful place. We moved from Chesterfield because of the higher quality standard of living, better schools, you know, it's not so crowded and cluttered. We love it here. Now my kids are grown. We're trying to sell our house. We can't sell our house because we have eyesore across the street. These, these neighbors, it's been ongoing for nine years. It wasn't an issue to sell the house in because, you know, our kids were living, we all lived in the house we needed, we liked the schools. But anyway, they're on their own. And now we're trying to sell our house. We can't sell our house because these neighbors, they have clutter, filth, squalor. I'm glad to hear of Mr. Williams and whoever participated in starting the trash ordinance because for over the years, I always called and got the reply, well, there's nothing we can do. There's no law, there's no ordinance. So now I understand they have a law and I'm very grateful, relieved to hear that. I just like to see the ball get rolling because these people have not made any effort to clean up their property. And it's just right outside my windows, right outside my door and, you know, they have a dumpster out there, a thirty-yard dumpster. And I work at, at a landfill, Sho Smith Sanitary Landfill. I don't know if y'all heard that, but I see trash all day, fifty hours a week, and I don't wanna come home and see it again. But, uh, they're not doing anything to fill up the dumpster. So, all I'm saying is, is if you can, you know, enforce this ordinance, get the ball rolling, and, and, and these people need follow-up. It's not just, you know, we're gonna slap you on the wrist one time. They need, you know, to be monitored because over nine years, they continue. They've been that way for nine years. They don't clean up, they put forth no effort. We try to go up there as good neighbors. Can you be good neighbors? Clean up, we're helping clean up. And you get, you know, anger. Nobody's gonna tell me how to live. This is, it's my home and I do what I want. But see, we're in a neighborhood and, and they're affecting the values of other people around them. Like I, I repeat again, I'm trying to sell my house. I get comments back from the realtors, other people like the location, they like the price, they like the layout, but when they look at my neighbors, uh, no thanks. Not interested. So something needs to be done. We're trying to sell and, you know, I don't know if I can sell or not. The property, real estate market's down and now to have these, this nuisance of an eyesore, it makes it very difficult for me to get anything done. I wanna continue to live in Powhatan, but, you know, if this, I'm gonna have to go through this every time because there's issues like this. I, I, I'm asking for you all to please, you know, provide funding, monitoring, whatever it takes. I'll work with you all. I try to work with the neighbors, but, uh, you know, anyone can, you know, help me out. I really appreciate it. Mr. Williams has done a lot and thank you for allowing me to give my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walters, for your comments. I'm sure staff making some notes and, and, you know, it would be, you know, it can be dealt with.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Cox. I'm Commonwealth Attorney for Powhatan County. I'm here asking the members of this Board of Supervisors to vote no on resolution 2016-02. That's the MOU resolution. Think you've probably looked into the audience and you see all five constitutional officers here today and I expect they all have that same request. While I can't speak for all five, I think they'll speak for themselves. I'm gonna give you just a few reasons I could speak much longer than three minutes. I like to preface it by saying I feel very privileged and honored to work with this board, with this county administration. Pat has been fantastic to work with, as all of you that I have worked with. This MOU came about about a year ago now and it served only to create tension, distrust between the constitutional officers, this Board of Supervisors, and the county administration. I don't think that was an intended result, it obviously wasn't, but that's the truth. That's what's happened. The reality of the situation is the lack of a MOU will in no way impede on the functioning of Powhatan County's government, constitutional officers, and this board. As I said, while its intended purpose, I believe, was good, that everyone be equal, the result has been anything but good. It's been negative. Should we go forward with this resolution tonight, I can guarantee you a few things. Some will sign and some won't. That's just the way it is. The people who are subject to any, any, I guess, retribution or punishment or disservice would be a select group of county employees who would be maybe not subject to raises or benefits offered by the county. They, they would be the victims, not the, any of us constitutional officers. You know, this, this board holds the purse strings and you may take whatever action is appropriate when that need arises. You don't need an MOU to do that. You need your, your conscience, doing the right thing, which is what I've seen y'all do since I've been here. As I said, I have nothing but respect for this board. You know, it's my pleasure to work with you, work with Pat, and I can tell you this, when I call Pat, I get an answer like that. I don't get put off. When I call Linda Jones, she takes care of me. When I call Charla, it's done. Finance problem, it's done. I'm, I, I can't be more tickled to be a Commonwealth Attorney of Powhatan County. But we, we don't need a MOU. We'll do, our constitutional officers will do our job. And if we don't, I know where I'll be in four years, I'll be looking for another job. The people tell me whether I'm doing my job. I feel like I'm very lucky to work with the other constitutional officers, Teresa, Jamie, Fay, and Brad. I think Powhatan's very lucky to have them. And I can guarantee you, from my part as Commonwealth Attorney and having witnessed them in action, we'll do, we'll, we'll be honest, we'll be fair, we'll do what's best for Powhatan County. And we don't need anything hanging over our head to do it. We'll do it because it's right and we'll do it because that's our duty. Probably went over my three minutes. Hope you don't penalize me too much, Mr. Chairman.
You're okay.
But I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, for your comments.
Good evening. I am Fay Barton. I am your treasurer. I don't think you need to know where I reside, but if you do, it's 3575, you cannot trail. I didn't plan on speaking tonight. I agree with what Dicky has just said. It's true. I've not had any problems working with Pat. Pat and I have a good relationship. I've not known of any problems working with any supervisor on that board. But I do have to address this MOU tonight. I'm here to oppose the resolution R. 2016-02 regarding the MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding with the County Board of Supervisors. I've been employed twenty-three years in treasurer's office, sixteen of which I have served as your treasurer. Never in the twenty-three years have I or another treasurer been asked or pressured to sign an agreement with the county for any reason. I was the first to sign the original document, but I don't like phrases like "sign this or you won't get that." Never has our salary of our employees or myself been threatened with a piece of paper. We've always in the past received an increase, the same as they are the county employees, and the only reason you shouldn't receive one is your evaluation should prove that point. That's why we have evaluations, not a piece of paper. I was elected by the people of this community to uphold my position and have been entrusted by them to do so, just as you were. The people chose me to make decisions for my office because their belief was that I could do that. They didn't require me to sign a piece of paper required by the elected officials to tell me how. And there's nothing in this paper regarding the rules with the county government that my office doesn't already do, and I think Pat and anybody else that knows me can attest for that. Therefore, I see it as a distrust issue and that, to me, is degrading, as I trust each and every one of you to do your jobs. And I don't require you to sign a contract with me. I trust you were elected by the majority to do your job, and if not, just as myself, I wouldn't be re-elected. So I ask you to say no to the resolution 2016-02. And I, I'm not up here to argue or have hard feelings against anybody. I, I work with every one of you. I work with Charla every day and I don't have a problem with Charla and if we do, we tell each other. And I don't have a problem with Pat or anybody up there. I just don't think it's a fair or, or just paper for us to sign. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, for your comments.
Good evening. Rookie constitutional officer.
That's okay.
Brad Nunnely, Sheriff, Powhatan County. Congratulations, everybody, on their elections here recently. It's me, thanks to a lot of people from my office came out, see me at my very first board meeting. It was my first day really in office. The MOU subject has come up and I guess this is the first thing I'm gonna have to address out the gate. Asking us to accept your employee handbook and sign it with this MOU, while your employee handbook, I can't appreciate the brevity of it. I already have a employee handbook that, as you can see, I've addressed the standards and the issues in my office. I'm fundamentally against signing any MOU with the county. Need to express my, that opinion for my office. Our authorities are granted to us by the state constitution, as are the checks and balances that govern our local system of government. I respect and agree that the board controls the purse strings that my office needs to provide for the public safety of Powhatan County. I have no issue explaining every dollar of the county's money that I will spend to provide for this security. I also respect and ask for you to do the same, that this same system provides autonomous control of the day-to-day operations of the constitutional offices to the duly-elected constitutional officer. I will not sign any agreement that fundamentally infringes upon that authority. I have looked at your MOU and read over it, discussed it with the veteran constitutional officers that have been here some time before me, and I really have no issue with the content of it. There are things that we're already doing, things that we have agreed to do in the past on an individual basis, rather than addressing them with a blanket MOU. I humbly submit to you, though, that any more discussions of an MOU are a waste of the board's time, the county administrator's time, and my office's time. My first day in office, I spent three-quarters of it today dealing with this issue. I do have quite a few things to get in order. Any talk of how my office can assist in providing a more efficient and cost-effective government is always welcome and I pledge my full cooperation in any of those matters and look forward to discussing plans for the future of my office with the county. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nunnely, for your comments.
Jamie Timberlake, 1450 Schroeder Road. I'm currently your Commissioner of Revenue. Not going to go against what Dicky said, but this actually started about two years ago. I think Dicky was brought in a year ago and dealt with it. This has wasted two years of, of county employee time and the things that we've done. The, Brad said it fundamentally, when you look at it, there's not anything on the piece of paper that jumps out at me that makes me not wanna sign it. But I feel like the whole thing that has just come about from the very beginning, Fay was the first one to sign it, I think I was one of the first ones that agreed to it two years ago. But the more and more we went through it, the more little things came out that seemed like people had different problems with the way that offices were run or it just, as Dicky said, it did create a negative spin on the entire thing. Really, and, and I've told Pat, I'll probably be one of the ones that has to end up signing if you're going to take my, my employee salaries, because I've worked extremely hard in my eight years in office to get those employees to the level that they're at now. When I took office, there were two employees that were over $5,000 below the minimum poverty level and they're not there anymore. They've been moved up. They're still not where they're supposed to be. We have fa, Phase Two of a plan that we talked about last year that everybody's aware of, that we want to see go forward, should the funds be available. But the MOU clearly states that they would be held at their January 1st of this year's salary, or could be, if we don't sign the piece of paper. I just wanna point out one thing that I just keep going back to in my mind. My grandfather and father told me is that, that piece of paper doesn't govern anything. Our actions are what should show and should be done. No matter whether they're good or bad, that piece of paper doesn't change that. And I think that you have a group of people on your side and a group of people on the constitutional officer's side that all want the best for this county. And let's let our actions speak for that and not worry about a little piece of paper that creates negative connotations. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake.
Good evening, Board, citizens of Powhatan. I'm Teresa Dobbins. I'm your Circuit Court Clerk. I reside at 3158 Lee's Landing Road. And I'm also here to talk about the resolution that I hope that you will all vote no for. We began these discussions shortly after I took office after the special election in 2014 and I'm happy to share with anyone how those negotiations have proceeded. I've got a stack of documents about that deep in my office. I feel that it's been a waste of the taxpayers' dollars for us to all spend so much time on a piece of paper that is asking us to do what each of us is currently doing at the moment. We have work to be done. We have the citizens' business to be dealt with on a daily basis and not the legal wranglings of one board against another elected official. I think we should prove to Powhatan County that a piece of paper is not that important. We have proven it through our actions and I hope we can prove to Powhatan County that we can go forward without a signed memorandum of understanding, also known as a contract. So I hope that each of you will do what the citizens have put you here to do, to be economical and to move forward with the business of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins.
Good evening. I'm Jason Gillespie. I live at 5773 Moore Creek Road. I came to talk about the MOU as well, from a citizen's standpoint. I sent an email to Mr. Tucker this evening. You probably, probably too late for you to get it, but I'm gonna go ahead and share that email and then I've got a couple of other comments. Email states, "I'm in opposition to the county attempting to require the constitutional officers to sign the memorandum of understanding, drafted requiring those officers to follow all of the county's personnel policies, pay scale, grievance procedures, et cetera. I believe the fact that the citizens of Powhatan County elected these officials should give them the right to administer to their departments however it is needed to make them as efficient as possible." I've read the resolution that is on the county website, R-2016-02, and the MOU, and it seems that the manner in which the documents are written, you know, pardon this term, I'm sure it's legal, but it's almost extortion. You know, it states that the constitutional officer does not desire to accept the terms of the agreement, that the county will not be obligated to increase the salary of an employee or deputy regardless of the, what the General Assembly provides for the cost of living allowance. The way this is written ties the hands of the constitutional officers to reorganize their officers in a manner that is reflective of what they promised in their campaigns and to their constituents. And if this is the way that the government was intended to be organized, I think that there would not be constitutional officers, it would only be a Board of Supervisors. I understand the intent was for uniformity and the treatment of the county employees, but I think it goes too far in affecting the way that individual county departments are managed. I appreciate your consideration, and, you know, after listening to some of these folks, you know, if you're holding something over somebody's head in order to get them to comply with what you're doing, your leadership style is wrong. You know, you guys were elected to be leaders and to be on the board of supervisors, and I believe that there's probably a better way to get what you need to accomplish in a way that's more conducive to running the county. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
If not, I'll close the first public comment period. We'll move on to item 13, which is found on page 25, approval of minutes for the December 7th regular meeting.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes 5-0.
We'll move on to item number 14, Code of Ethics and Rules of Engagement, found on page 35 of your packet. Any questions? I know in our one-on-one meetings with Pat and March and some input from our county attorney, we have the kind of end result of those meetings and thought process from all of us. Do we have any further questions? Any changes were made in red since the last meetings we've had? If not, I'll be glad to make a motion, a move that we approve the Code of Ethics and Rules of Engagement as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes 5-0.
We'll now move on to item number 15, R-2016-02, extending to the constitutional officers of the Palatine County Personnel System.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
After listening to the discussion...
Excuse me, Mr. Williams is asking what the noise is. I think that's one of the... It may be one of the county dogs or somebody's dog, I think.
I keep hearing things coming from behind the curtain.
I think it's haunted.
The dog is not happy. Maybe he should come in here. No, just kidding.
It's a wild...
It may be the police dog, David, so I heard him. I think he's going out.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
That's right.
Might want to bring him in.
That's what I say. We make him sergeant-at-arms, so...
Just checking.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Norvig.
No, I'd rather talk about that.
I'm sorry.
Real quick, comment on the MOU, and thank you to the constitutional officers for coming forward. The...I hear your comments, and I understand. The last thing I think any of the five on the board or anybody on the county staff wishes is to have tension and distrust and that. I can pretty much speak for everybody up here. We're not going for that at all. So I think there are a couple of things I heard that are maybe misconceptions, and I'm going in the area of having the same holidays so that people see a unified county when it comes to the calendar, things like that. I'm not talking about holding salaries over people's heads or whatever, but I do think there's a couple of things just to discuss briefly. I do not want to drag this MOU thing out. Two years is long enough, but I would like to have 15 or 20 minutes. For those of you who don't know, during public comment period, we as a board are not allowed to engage in conversation with the people who come up to the podium. What I would suggest, and I'm going to make a motion to defer to the 20th, I would like a closed session with any of the constitutional officers who would like to attend, 15 minutes apiece or so, and just come in, have a brief talk. There's no other way to do that, because the five of us, any three of us can't get together, but it's an official meeting. So I think the best way to do it would be a closed session, just real quick, 15 minutes. The 20th, I think we have a school board, joint school board meeting?
At 7:00 PM.
Okay, so if we could do that, and then five days later, we have our next meeting, our next board meeting, and we can take action and vote and decide one way or another, I think that would go a long way toward fixing this problem. So I would like to make a motion to defer resolution R-2016-02, extending the constitutional officers to Palatine County Personnel System to a meeting on January 20th, time to be named?
5:00 PM.
5:00? 5:00 PM on January 20th for the purpose of discussion with any constitutional officers who wish to attend. Tom, is that good enough?
That accomplishes the task.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
More discussion on the motion, if we will. I suggested some time ago when we first started on this project that we have a joint workshop with all of the constitutional officers and board supervisors, and if the press could be there, they wanted to be there, I think that would be good as well, any citizens to hear our discussion. Because what we've never done is got in a room, together all of us, and had this discussion sitting around the kitchen table. Now, one of the constitutional officers might bring forward something that another constitutional officer hadn't thought of that would develop more conversation about that particular topic, likewise among us. Carson might bring forward something in one meeting with one constitutional officer that we hadn't thought of when we had met with the previous constitutional officers. So I would go back to my original suggestion. If you want to have a workshop, let's have a workshop, let's have the roundtable, let's get everybody in the room, and let's have the discussion about how we can accomplish the things that were set forward in the MOU without necessarily having an MOU. If I can accomplish the goals that have been set forward, what I'm hearing from the constitutional officers, to a great extent, a very high percent, probably 98, 99, I don't know what the percent is, these things are being done today. So I'm going to focus on results, outcomes, as opposed to an MOU, which I've heard repeatedly over the last two years that's caused angst and distrust and taken away from things we really should be focusing on. And again, I focus on outcomes, not necessarily, you know, the MOU as a signed document. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
So, Mr. Williams, are you making an amendment to the motion as presented, that we have a open workshop versus a closed session?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Norvig.
To your point, David, I agree. The only thing I want to check with Tom, the reason I felt a closed session might be better is because this is somewhat a contractual thing, and it involves people's pay. I don't know if anybody in the constitutional officers want to kick numbers around, and I just thought it was more appropriate to do that in a closed session. I don't mean to hide anything or whatever.
Oh, no, no, no.
And I know you didn't mean that.
No.
But I totally agree, and that was my intent, was to have a group talk about this and get it done. That's exactly what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, Larry. I appreciate your sensitivity to that.
If we can do it appropriately in an open session...
But salary is a public information.
Mr. Latchey, will you... One of the ways you could approach is you can approach it, starting it as a roundtable discussion, and if the need arises to take some portion of it into closed, we can make the motion at that time in that meeting. So if we make it a special meeting, and you're sitting at a roundtable, and something comes up that's potentially closed, it would be perfectly legal and appropriate to make a motion at that meeting to take some portion of it into closed session.
I withdraw my second. If you will draw your motion and start over again.
So we have a motion from Mr...we have the same motion. Mr. Williams has amended it to make it a 5:00 public meeting, and we don't have a second for that at this point.
And just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, it would automatically be a 5:00 public meeting. We would then subsequently go into a closed session if that's what you chose to do. So the actual meeting notice is going to be open meeting regardless. I mean, you're going to have a meeting notice, 5:00 special meeting or work session. Well, you know, that's what the notice is going to say. Whether you do some portion of it or all of it out in public, or we find some portion of it is appropriate to take to a closed session, that can be decided then at the actual meeting. You don't need to make that decision tonight. All you got to make the decision tonight is to meet at 5:00. And then, once you make the decision to meet at 5:00, at that meeting, you can determine if some portion of it's appropriate to take to a closed...
Tom, I hear what you're saying, but if you're going to run a public notice and you advertise in a meeting that we're going to have this discussion with the constitutional officers, I would hope that we don't immediately adjourn and go into closed session.
No, I'm not recommending that.
I know, but I'm saying this, you know, for us and for the public. I would rather see, to the extent possible, that we have that public meeting with the constitutional officers, and we have that dialogue and that exchange of information sitting around the table, and then on such occasion, if required, then and only then, do we go into closed session.
So do you need a second to Mr. Williams's friendly amendment?
Yep.
Yes. I think everybody's in agreement.
I don't think there's a need to make...
Yeah, there's no dispute.
Even to make Mr. Williams' amendment, Mr. Norvig has a motion on the floor to have a meeting on the 20th.
Right.
And it was been seconded by Mr....
And that's what I'm saying, that's really all the motion that's needed, meeting on the 20th, 5:00.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to have a meeting on the 20th to discuss MOUs with the constitutional officers. Now, I have a couple of comments. Having been one person who's spent an awful lot of time discussing MOUs with the constitutional officers, the one thing that created the angst and the ill will between the constitutional officers was our lack of professionalism. When I say "our lack," I'm talking about the board of supervisors. We had several of us who were saying things they didn't want it, it wasn't their idea. So what I want out of this meeting is that we will have clear clarity of what this board wants to do, the majority of this board. And then when we leave there, we'll vote on the 25th, and the matter will be over. We'll not drag out like this past one did. I will not stand for that because it created angst and problems, and that is not what the intent of this is. I think we'll come prepared that night to talk about the things that we are concerned with. Y'all can come talk about the things you're concerned with, and we'll have open dialogue about them and leave there with some clarity, and then we'll make a decision as of order on the 25th, and we will give direction to our county administrator who got caught in the middle of this thing last time. Thank you.
One comment.
Yes, sir.
Before we bring this thing to a vote, I would like to say I very much appreciate the dignity and the decorum with which all of the constitutional officers spoke tonight. Thank you very much for doing it that way.
I agree 100%. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion as presented?
It requires a roll.
Excuse me, I apologize, you're incorrect.
Or maybe it doesn't. It's not the resolution.
No, motion to defer doesn't need a roll.
Okay, it would if we were voting on the resolution.
Yeah, you weren't voting on the resolution, yes. Sorry.
So all in favor of the motion to defer till the 20th?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We'll now move on to appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. If you're leaving, please be quiet.
Go feed that dog, would you?
Hold a minute, Bill, let the noise subside.
So, may I ask the county attorney, are these are motions, so they don't require seconds, or they do require seconds?
These appointments?
Yes.
These appointments are just a motion.
They don't require...
No seconds? I didn't hear what you said.
I think we put in the handbook, in the bylaws, I'm going by memory, I didn't check that before I got here, but I think the chairman can dispense with a second on these.
Okay.
So we do not need a second.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to...let me get my stuff together.
Let's start at page 45.
My screen has died on me. Let me get it going.
You want mine?
No, I'm okay. It'll come back. Item 12A, appointments, Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee. I'm going to nominate Carson Tucker and Mr. James B. Timberlake II to serve on the Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee. So we do not need a second on that. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we will call for a vote. Vote on the two people nominated for that, Agricultural and Forestry District Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstain? Motion passes 5-0. Now we move on to item 12B, the Anti-Litter Council.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Larry Norvig and Vernell Strauder. And notice a typo there, it's "Strauder" not "Slaughter."
We have two people. Any other people want to note appointment to the Anti-Litter Council? Hearing no more, we'll close the nominations. All in favor of the two candidates presented, Mr. Norvig and Vernell Strauder?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Motion passes 5-0. We now have the item 12C, Broadband Citizen Advisory Committee. We'll nominate Pete Sisti, Mr. Rick Davis, and Ms. Lummi Jones. Any other nominations for the advisory committee?
Mr. Chairman, I have a pointed discussion on that.
Okay.
As I understand, the ideal number is seven for that committee, and we have...is it correct that we have six now total if these are...
If you approve that, you'll have six, correct.
Okay, because I have an interested citizen, I just heard back on email today, he'd be perfect for the job. He's a professional tech worker with a well-known company, but he does not have an application, and so I can present that perhaps at the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to give people a heads up.
I have the nominees. You don't have any?
So if anybody had any other nominees, I'm going to have one, just to let you know. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. And most of these people that have sent their...they bring different diversity, some bring some IT background, some be some business background, so I think these are wonderful candidates. So we have a motion for Pete Sisti, Rick Davis, and Lummi Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 5-0. Now we want to item 12D, Capital Area Agency on Aging, Senior Connections Advisory Council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we appoint Angie Cabell to the Capital Area Agency on Aging and Senior Connections Advisory Council.
Ms. Cabell, thank you for serving. Any other nominees? All, close the nominations. All opposed...excuse me. I apologize. All in favor that Angie Cabell is the Capital Agency on Aging and Senior Connections Advisory Council?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 5-0. 12G, James River Advisory Council. We have two people that normally serve on that. Do we have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Carson Tucker and Jamie Babcock.
Any other nominations? While it doesn't require a second, I will...really, Mr. Babcock has been somebody who's been very active in the county and seems to want to continue to get involved. I just think it's a wonderful commitment that he's made to serve on this council. So we have two nominations, Mr. Tucker, Mr. James Babcock. Any others? We'll close the nomination process. All in favor of the two individuals? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Palatine Community Action Agency Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Angie Cabell, Teresa Dobbins, Beverly Fund, Bill Melton, and Sharla Schubert to the CAA.
Wow, five people. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. All in favor of the five people presented?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Palatine Community Action Agency Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Juliana Franklin, who lives in my district. I think she'd be a wonderful fit for this, and both she and her husband are eager to pitch in for the community, so I would nominate Juliana Franklin for the Goochland Palatine Community Services Board.
While it doesn't require a second, I will tell you, I read her qualifications, and she brings a lot of expertise and a lot of knowledge, and it was wonderful that she chose to try to get involved. I'm very pleased. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll vote on Ms. Franklin for the Palatine...excuse me, the Goochland Community...Palatine Community Service Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 5-0. 12G, James River Advisory Council. We have two people that normally serve on that. Do we have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Carson Tucker and Jamie Babcock.
Any other nominations? While it doesn't require a second, I will...really, Mr. Babcock has been somebody who's been been very active in the county and seems to want to continue to get involved. I just think it's a wonderful commitment that he's made to serve on this council. So, we have two nominations, Mr. Tucker, Mr. James Babcock. Any others? We'll close the nomination process. All in favor of the two individuals? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Powhatan Community Action Agency Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Angie Cabal, Teresa Dobbins, Beverly Fund, Bill Melton, and Charlotte Schubert to the CAA.
Wow, five people. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. All in favor of the five people presented?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 5-0. Richmond Area Transportation Planning Organization. I'm gonna nominate Larry Norvig. March Altman is an alternate, Carson Tucker is an alternate, and a PC planning commission member to be determined because that individual, that we haven't selected our planning commission yet, so we'll have to do that at a later meeting. So, there's three nominations, Larry Norvig, March Altman, and Carson Tucker.
And what is this to?
This is to the TPO.
I made myself, as I'm already on.
So, we have a nomination, Mr. Norvig, we have a nomination for Mr. Williams. So, at this point, I guess?
I'm sorry, is this for the RRPD?
This is number 12, this is 12I.
I.
12I, Richmond Area Transportation Planning Organization.
No, that would be J, that's the problem.
I think you're mentioning it.
12I is Richmond Regional Planning District Commission.
Hang on, let me get the.
No, it's Richmond area.
The TPO is under J.
Oh, the I is RRPD.
Okay, so, we're now, we're on I, which is RRPD. I apologize. We will not be doing the transportation, we'll be on RRPD. And at that point, I will nominate Larry Norvig and Carson Tucker. And PC member to be determined? Any other nominations?
Well, I'm gonna nominate myself again, being as I'm already chairman this year, and I've been serving at the RRPD since my planning commission days. So, yeah, I'm gonna nominate myself.
So, we have two, on this board, we usually have two board members and a PC member. We're gonna name the PC member at a later date because we do not have a planning commission member, which will be reappointed on January 31st. At our next meeting, we'll make that decision. So, we'll call for the vote on Carson Tucker, I guess, how would we handle this, Mr. Parliament arian?
First two to get to the three votes.
Okay. So, I'll call, I'll call.
You can just call them in order they were nominated, and when you get two, when you filled it, or when two people get three votes.
Let me ask a question. I got a sense of where this is going. If I'm not reappointed to the RRPD, then this is effective when?
Is effective immediately. We serve through the end of December 31st.
So, I would no longer be able to serve my term as chairman at the PDC?
I'll call for the vote. We'll call in the order they were nominated. Mr. Carson Tucker for PDC.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. You abstain, Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
So, we have three ayes, one abstention. Any nos? Mr. Williams, are you voting?
I'm gonna abstain, 'cause Carson's already a member.
So, we have three votes for yes, zero votes no, two abstentions. I will now call for Mr. Larry Norvig. All in favor of Mr. Norvig on the PDC?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
And any abstentions?
Abstaining.
Motion passes 3, 1, 1. We'll now call for Mr., excuse me, I have three votes, do I need to call a vote for Mr. Williams?
Now, if you've already filled the two positions.
Two positions. We have Mr. March Altman as an alternate, excuse me, I'm sorry, PC member to be determined, and we do need an alternate member. Can you get a nomination on an alternate member for the PDC? Usually, it's a board member.
I'll nominate David Williams as an alternate. Don't accept the nomination?
No, no, no. And I'll explain to you why. I'm more than a little bit disappointed. And Carson, you know, you and I have served out there for some time, and you've seen what's happened over at the PDC. You've been there at the meetings with me at the TPO, for example, and Lowly-Powhatan County changed that organization. And you saw what I did. And you were very appreciative and laudatory in your comments about what I did. Similarly, serving as chairman this year of the PDC, you've seen what went on in terms of what we were able to accomplish. In six months, we replaced the executive director when Bob Crumb left. And we did it in a fashion that was extraordinary. Last time, the change occurred at the PDC, it took 18 months. Took six months. We met our schedule, our timelines, we used the existing resources of this region. We used the human resource heads to do the job search. We didn't go outside, we didn't pay money, we didn't bring somebody in to babysit. We did it all internally in this region. And I was extremely proud of what we were, of what we accomplished as a PDC. So, you're gonna go back and you're gonna now send a message to the PDC, you didn't reappoint David Williams. That you chose instead to do something for other reasons. That's extremely disappointing. I'm disappointed in you, Carson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I have a couple of comments. I certainly appreciate Mr. Williams deciding whether he wants to accept the alternate nomination or not. I did not, and I'll repeat, did not enter in this thought process lightly. I weighed all options and I did what I felt like was best for Powhatan County. That's all I have to say. Thank you. So, can we get a nomination? Mr. Williams will not accept the nomination for the alternate member? Can I get a nomination for the alternate member, please?
Ms. Cabal, will you accept it?
Um, yes.
We have a nomination for the PDC alternate member to be Angie Cabal. All in favor? Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. All in favor of Angie Cabal as the alternate member on the PDC? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 3. You abstaining, Ms. Cabal?
Yes.
Okay, 3, 0. Mr. Williams? Are you abstaining?
No, Angie, you.
So, we're voting for Angie, Mr. Williams is voting yes as an alternate member, so it passes 4-0-1. Thank you. We'll move on to the TPO. I'll make the nominations for the TPO. Again, I apologize for making it out of order. It's Larry Norvig, the PC member to be determined, we will vote on later on, Mr. March Altman and Carson Tucker as alternates. Any other nominations for the TPO?
I'll go ahead and nominate myself, make it official, and we'll go through the same process we did with the PDC.
Okay. We have a nomination for Mr. Williams. All in favor of the two, the three nominations, we'll do one at a time, and take them in order of the presentation. Larry Norvig, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? One no, abstentions? Mr. Norvig, are you abstaining?
No, I'm voting. I would like to be on that committee.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Vote 4-0, 4-1-0. Mr. March Altman as the alternate. All in favor of Mr. Altman as the alternate?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? I'll take that, as motion passes 5-0. Mr. Carson Tucker as the alternate? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We might have two alternates?
We have two alternates currently on there.
That was my question.
There's two current alternates and one PC member. So, the motion for Carson Tucker, all in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention? I'll take it, motion passes 4-0-1. Move on to item.
What's the final configuration of the TPO?
The TPO is Mr. Larry Norvig, Mr. Altman is the alternate, Mr. Tucker is an alternate, and a PC member to be determined. We'll now move on to item.
K.
K. Richmond Area Transportation Planning Organization Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee, CTAC.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate March Altman and Ed Howland as the alternate.
Perfect.
That's for the, this is the Citizens Transportation Advisory.
I apologize.
And the CTAC.
CTAC, we're gonna defer that.
It's 12K.
I apologize. That is a, those people serve all the way through February 28th, so we do not need to nominate those people at this time. We're gonna see if anybody sends any names in and deal with it from there. So, I would vote we'd defer action on that item till, I apologize, Ms. Cabal, defer action until February 2016. Okay? We're now gonna go to Richmond Area Transportation CTAC, correct? Excuse me.
This is TAC.
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 Richmond Area Transportation Planning Organizational Technical Advisory Committee called TAC.
This is 16L, and it's found on page 86.
Okay. And it would be?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate March Altman and Ed Howland as the alternate.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. We'll vote on the two people, March Altman is the candidate and Ed Howland is the alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes 5-0. We'll now move on to M, Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, Capital Regional Collaborative, which is CRC. So, that would be 12M.
It's 16M, and it's found on page 89.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Pat and Angie to be on the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, Capital Region Collaborative Organizing Council. Woof, CRC.
CRC. We have two nominations, any other nominations for the Capital Region Collaborative? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. All in favor of Pat Wyler and Angie Cabal, serve on this committee? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 5-0. Now, move on to 12N, Richmond Area Planning District Commission Small Jurisdiction.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Pat Wyler and Larry Norvig to the SJC.
Any other nominations? Close the nominations. Two people presented, Pat Wyler and Larry Norvig. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We'll now move on to 12, excuse me.
16O.
16O. Social Service Board.
Mr. Chairman, I've got two nominations for Social Services Board. I nominate Carson Tucker and Angie Cabal.
We have a nomination for two individuals on the Social Service Board. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. All in favor of Carson Tucker and Angie Cabal?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes 5-0. The next one is the Virginia Coalition for High Growth Communities.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate you.
Any other nominations? Close the nominations, all in favor? Vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions, one. Motion passes 4-0-1. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to item 17, Virginia Urban Crescent Letter to Governor McAuliffe and the 2016 General Assembly, found on page 1 on 1 of your agenda. Basically, this is asking that they fully fund and give more money to education in the state, in the localities, and to not send unfunded mandates down about education.
On December, and to further expand on what the chairman has said, on December 11th of 2015, more than 150 government school division and business representatives from the Virginia Urban Crescent met to discuss the Commonwealth share of funding for public education. Mr. March Altman, the deputy county administrator, Dr. Eric Jones, the Powhatan County Public Schools superintendent, and Mr. James Conca, the Powhatan County Public Schools Board Chairman, all attended that meeting. From that meeting, those in attendance agreed that they would write a letter to be signed by any jurisdiction which wished to have, which wished to sign the letter. That letter is found on page 102, and as the chairman said, it encourages the Commonwealth to increase funding for public education, and it states how the state funding for public education has decreased over the last six years. And so, before you is a letter for you to determine whether you wish to have the county of Powhatan sign on with the other jurisdictions that will potentially be signing on to sign this letter to go to the governor and to members of the General Assembly. So, if you wish, it would take a motion to authorize the chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign the Urban Crescent Letter that's dated January 6th.
Any questions or comments?
I think the letter's pretty straightforward, and March attended it, the session, and I thought, and speaking with Dr. Jones, he felt it was a very well-written letter, and so, I'm all in favor of it.
Any other comments?
Well, I'm not gonna be voting for it, Mr. Chairman. And I'll tell you why. Nowhere in the letter does it say where the money's gonna come from, or there was no real discussion about how this was gonna be done. I was at the former Golden Crescent Meeting on Transportation. There was a very specific table on, proposal on the table, and that was to increase the gasoline tax. Now, there was a lot of discussion in the room about the efficacy of that approach. And the meeting really didn't have any unanimity coming out of it. Now, I can see somebody taking this letter and standing up on the floor of the House or the Senate, saying, "Look here, we've got these localities that says we've got to fully fund education." And you don't know what path they're gonna take, but you've signed off on this letter, and they're gonna use it. But whatever fix that they come up with, they're gonna hold it up and saying, "This is what you've asked me to do." That's the problem with these kinds of letters. You don't know how it's gonna be used. You don't know what approaches. We were told that any funding that went over to transportation was going to decrement funding for education. That was one of the reasons that the governor's transportation bill, Governor Donald's transportation bill, got passed with the tax increases. Now, I can't tell you why or where the money has gone in the budget that has caused the decrease in funding for education. I don't know. But I do need to know, have some idea about what the fix is gonna be. Is it gonna be within the existing budget amount through a reallocation of the budget? Is it gonna be, and nowhere in the letter does it say, within the existing tax structure, does it?
No.
So, I heed caution. Before you put your name on this thing, saying that you're in support, make sure that you know how it's gonna be used down at the General Assembly by whom. That's my final comment, Mr. Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your comments. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of authorizing the chairman to sign the Urban Crescent Letter?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We'll now move on to item eighteen, FY two thousand seventeen Budget Guidelines. I think, Charlotte, you're gonna take this? And it's a handout that was given to, sitting in front of you like this, that you can follow through with.
So we did email this handout to the Board of Supervisors last Thursday.
Yes.
And we also emailed it to everyone who is on the agenda distribution list, and there are copies of this handout at the back of the room for anyone that may want a copy of it. Thank you.
Okay. What we're kind of presenting tonight is just some of our revenue estimates, some of the things that we're looking at through the budget process and looking for guidelines from the board as to what their priorities are gonna be for fiscal year seventeen, so that we may continue to develop our fiscal year seventeen budget. So on the first slide, Ms. Wyler presented this slide to the board on November the sixteenth, board meeting, on our real estate, two thousand sixteen real property assessed values. As of January one of fourteen, our assessed values were almost three point three billion dollars, and these are assessed values. When you add the two thousand fourteen new construction and two thousand fifteen new construction, we have an increase in value from two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen, which will give us a three point six billion dollar assessed value as of January one, two thousand sixteen. So as of, so our increase to our real estate property values as of to date is six point four percent since the last reassessment done, which was effective January one of two thousand fourteen. The current tax rate right now is ninety cents. The effective tax, the effective tax rate increase, tax rate has no effective increase or decrease if it was to be reduced to eighty-five cents. With that, so we gave an example of, at two thousand fourteen, if your property was valued at a hundred thousand at the ninety cent rate, would be taxes of nine hundred dollars. If your property went up the six point four percent in two thousand sixteen, at the ninety cent rate, you'd pay nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. At the effective tax rate, it would, at eighty-five cents, you would then pay nine hundred dollars. The January one, two thousand sixteen real property assessed values would be for our fiscal year seventeen budget. They'd be due November fifth of two thousand sixteen and May fifth of two thousand seventeen. The board sets their rate in May of two thousand sixteen as part of the budget process and during the public hearing, or after the public hearing. For the, this slide just goes on to talk about the rate, right, at the current rate, the real estate rate in ninety cents, which is on a fiscal year, and our personal property tax rates are based on a calendar year, which are due May of two thousand fifteen and November of two thousand fifteen, which all of our different types of personal property rates are set at three dollars and sixty cents, with the exception of disabled veterans and volunteer fire and rescue, which the board had adopted at a point zero zero one tax rate, essentially to have no tax due. One cent on the estimated real estate tax for fiscal year seventeen would be three hundred and eighteen thousand, five cents would be one point five million. Our unknowns right now is the Board of Equalization adjustments. We've gotten through our assessor appeals, which were completed prior to the holidays. We're gearing up for, after January, after, right now, in the next few weeks, we'll be setting our Board of Equalization appeals, which will, the deadline for that, to make those media, or appeal dates are March thirty-first, which will probably push the meetings up through about May. Our personal property taxes, based on our, what we've been looking at, our assessed values currently are increasing at about four point one percent, and those are the personal property. The sales taxes, we budgeted two point six million, but after our trend analysis and looking at where we are at the first four months of this year, it's already increasing fourteen percent. The annual increases from fiscal year twelve to fiscal year fifteen are on the screen, fourteen percent, fifteen percent. We had a little dip, eleven percent, and we're back up to thirteen percent, and we are seeing increases. Our current unknowns of fiscal year seventeen is always the state budget, the Board of Equalization adjustments to any real estate assessments, personal property assessment estimates, as well as the VRS rate, our health insurance rate, our phase two of our class and comp implementation, the implementation of the Economic Development Plan, the Emergency Communications Center, our broadband initiative, and our capital improvement projects. Currently, we have three that are in the design phase, and I don't believe we, or four in the design phase, I'm sorry, I had three. The junior high school, or will be our new middle school, Sallyport, the joint maintenance facility, and I'm trying to think what the fourth one is on top of my head.
Radio system.
Radio system. I know, I was gonna forget that one. And those estimates have not quite gotten back to us yet. They're in process. So that concludes the presentation. At this time, we're presenting all this to you so that we can get what your priorities are for the next year, so that we can continue to move forward and get you your proposed budget. I believe we're gonna present it on February twenty-second meeting. Any questions?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Questions about personal property tax rates, and there's really no firm answer on this, Charlotte, but.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty seventeen estimated personal property taxes, four point one percent increase. Can you give me an idea of what components of personal property make us think that it's gonna increase four point one percent? For example, personal property would include automobiles, correct?
Automobiles, your business personal property.
And, well, let me, let me stop right there. Personal property on automobiles, automobile sales have not increased four point one percent. It hasn't done as well. So I'm kind of wondering, you know, who are the superstars in here, or is it kind of even across the board? Where are we getting that number?
Um, I'd have to have the piece right in front of me.
Is that the current trend, at four point one percent?
Yes.
Yeah, so the current trend is, it's trending up four point one percent of this graph.
Right. But what, can you give me an idea what part of that personal property is trending up? I have a reason for asking, but.
Well, the four point percent is across all of the personal property types. It's not just the automobiles, it's also your business personal property.
Right.
Merchants camp, merchants' capital, machinery and tools. So those, we look at the, that percentage up is the overall of all of those types. So it's not just your automobiles.
Okay. I would like to know if you can find the information.
Mm-hmm.
Like, can you break that, that overall number, four point one percent? Can you break that down for me so I can see who's excelling and who's maybe, you know, what category is excelling, what category is not? I'd be interested to know that. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions or, at this time, or comments? I think this is several things that we've talked about in the past as a board, that we provide guidance to staff so that they can build a plan. I will, I'll go on record that, that I wanted to make sure that we reduced not only our tax, our tax rate, and Mr. Williams reminded me that he pushed pretty hard to talk about reducing taxes. So I think the plan at minimum should capture the nickel that, that has been proposed to be revenue neutral, so that, so at a base, that should be one of the directives that I would like to see as a base, that, that it, that it capture that nickel. Also, reading the Economic Development Consultant's Plan, it referenced business personal property and machinery and tools, so I think what Mr. Nordvik just asked for will be very helpful. It references those as being some of the highest in the locality, surrounding localities. So if we could have, have a plan that, that would, A, maybe cap, reduce it fifty percent, or to at least begin the process of looking at it, I would like to see that. Sales, sales tax revenue, you're saying where trend is fourteen percent. I guess what we'll be looking for you is, if we're gonna continue that trend, are we gonna be conservative with, with that? Because it's all revenues. I personally feel like fourteen percent would be a good number to start at, and then allow us to digest that at that time. Do you know when we will be getting the, kind of the cost figures together on some of the projects? Do we have an anticipation timeline on those?
We had told you that, that we would be bringing them back to you in January. You will receive some of them on January twentieth, when you meet with the school board. You'll receive the cost estimates on the new middle school. I believe you'll receive the cost estimates on the transportation facility on February third, the radio, correct, on those four projects, yes.
Okay.
And tell us when the state numbers will be available to us?
The state adopts their budget at the end of March.
Maybe.
Maybe.
The VRS rate should be here by the end of January, as should the health insurance rates. We should know those by the end of January.
Do we not have a cop, do we not have an initial cost for the phase-two class implementation? Didn't we carry that? Didn't we have that?
We do have initial costs. We have to reevaluate that based on people that have left and people that have.
Well, I think we need to see that as a placeholder.
Okay.
And then, as far as a broadband initiative, of course, this is something that's moving pretty rapidly. I guess, are we trying to capture that in the, I know we talked about it possibly in the upgrade of the radio system that may be part of that, or is that something we need to have a placeholder for?
We, it will become its own initiative, and, yes, we have talked about that potentially. Some of the infrastructure for the radio system could be used for broadband, but we're only in initial discussions on it.
Okay.
We haven't made no decisions. Was your directive that you want us to address the broadband initiative?
I think we need to be, see a number, and allow us as a board to digest that and figure out the implementation on how that can take place, and then have to make some decisions at that point. Any other thoughts from the board? As she builds her, you know, the initial plan.
Well, I've been, Mr. Chairman, I've been quite clear on where I stand on this. I'm, I'm looking for tax relief. So something below a nickel as a starting point. Second thing is, we've got the groundwork in place to start going forward with broadband. With the study that we have on file, with what we know, with, you know, with Charles City and what they've accomplished, this seems to be very doable. But again, you need to look, I'm gonna need to be looking at the numbers as to what we can afford and what we can't afford at this point, because the projects, the things that are in the capital improvement plan that Charlotte went through, that's some pretty heavy bills in there. So I'm gonna be looking at what is gonna be the debt capacity, what's gonna be the debt burden, how we're gonna provide tax relief to citizens in this county, because we're the third highest tax rate. Now, tax rate's not the same thing as tax relief, as already been pointed in this presentation. Eighty-five cents is basically revenue neutral. So we are the ninth highest taxed county in the Commonwealth. So I'm looking at things, like Mr. Melton said, we've got the machines and tools tax, when we compare ourselves to the peer group, and that economic development plan that was brought forward by the consultants, they show that we had the highest within that peer group. So reduction there would help not only businesses, but I think economic development as well, because if you look at the amortization schedules that we have, that's where we're having problems. We don't depreciate things as fast as maybe some other jurisdictions in that peer group. So at a high level, I like broadband. I think that's gonna help economic development, it's gonna help, you know, the citizens in this county. I'm looking at tax relief, and then again, I'm looking at the overall picture of how we do these projects. As the county administrator said, she's gonna put everything in there. And then you're gonna have to figure out what you can afford, you know, what you can realistically, you know, be able to layer in in terms of new debt, what the impact's gonna be on your debt capacity, and then you're gonna have to make an informed decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other directions, comments, wish list, if you wanna call it? Should call it a wish list, but things, Pat, do you feel like you've got enough directions to kind of start putting a plan together? Or Charlotte, I should ask.
You would like us to decrease taxes and increase expenditures.
Yeah.
Got that message, glad it cleared.
Easy plan, isn't it, Pat? So, so we all understand what one penny equals in tax rate, so we know one cent equals three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So as we work through this, I think it's something that we should, you know, as Mr. Williams has pointed out, we, we should keep in mind as we work through the plan and digest all of the things that are facing us, and how to accomplish those, and, and work hard to make sure we're as frugal as possible with the citizens' money. Any other directions?
I have one more, sir.
Yes.
David just touched on the phrase, I guess, economic growth, I think, should be something that we keep very much in mind. I think one of the reasons that our tax rate is at ninety right now is because for a long time, before this board was ever, well, this board or the one we just rolled off of was ever convened, I think Powhatan has wanted to keep its rural character so much so that they have sometimes turned down economic growth opportunity. So what I'll be looking at is, kind of like David, a base point more than one nickel drop on the tax rate, I would like to see. I, I think the citizens have carried the burden long enough. I think it was probably incumbent on the leadership over, let's say, decades, to get the balance of residential, commercial tax burden at the magic seventy percent, thirty percent, that most counties look for. I think we are about ninety-two eight on our split, and to me, that's, that's the problem right there. I don't want to, we just came off of Christmas, and my family traditionally watches Scrooge every year. I don't want our county to become Scrooge. I want this county to turn and burn and grow in a way that's acceptable to the citizens, meaning basically rural-friendly. If, if a light industrial building's gonna be put up and a new company come in, let's put it behind the trees along sixty, or behind the food line, or in the industrial parks that we have. So as I look at the budget going forward, and if I had to give a, I guess, a soft guideline here, it would be, I would rather grow us into lower taxes, not scrimp and save and shrink into lower taxes. So that would, that would be my basic approach. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nordvik. Very well said. Any other guidelines or directions? Now, we'll move on to item nineteen, which is our second public comment period. Please limit your time to three minutes or five minutes as individual. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time.
Adam Sadler, nine eighty-three Manniken Road. I'm gonna make it really short and sweet. I have someone's keys. Found in the parking lot.
Well, I think there was a set sitting back there for many years that nobody ever cleaned, so.
Yeah, those are still back there.
Okay, they are? Maybe we could get their vehicle. No, just kidding.
Brad Nunn with the Sheriff's Office spoke earlier, fourteen, fifteen, down on the middle road, or lane, excuse me. I have a question, and you may have, this may not be a proper point to talk about this or not, so if it is, feel free to correct, or not, feel free to correct me. When you put off the MOU thing till the twentieth, that is gonna affect my office, or otherwise I wouldn't have had to speak again. I do have some vacancies through attrition that I'm trying to address, and the county administrator's been very helpful, and Linda Jones, and pointing me in the right directions with a few things. But one of the things about this MOU that I have a little bit of issue with, my last response, or my last message through my captain to the county administration was that I do have two good applicants right now that are currently employed by other sheriff's agencies, one of which which has quite a number of years of experience, sixteen years plus. Now, I'm not gonna discuss specific salaries.
Hey, Brad.
Yes?
I'm not sure you should be discussing personnel salaries.
Okay, won't discuss salaries.
In a public meeting, I think that you'd be better off handling that with the county administrator. I know you've got your vacancies.
Yeah.
And the MOU's not in effect at this point, so I think you've got salary ranges for your people, and I think you have the ability to use the handbook.
Yes, sir.
That's currently there, that gives you the ability to move them in the scale from zero to midpoint, if I understand correctly.
Yes, sir, you do.
Is that, is that?
That's not correct, but we can discuss that later, so.
Okay. Yeah, the, the issue is not salaries.
Okay.
Okay.
The issue was.
Okay, I thought it was salary.
No, sir, I apologize.
But it's also, this isn't the place to discuss.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Negotiation with them.
Yeah, if I can just interject, and don't go away, Brad.
Got it.
I, I think there may be some kind of a ticking clock here on hiring.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
And the, the twentieth may not.
Yes, sir.
Be ideal for you.
Yes, sir.
So instead of discussing this issue, which we really cannot do, just know that we are very willing to discuss that as soon as you need to.
Oh, okay. I am gonna need to, quickly, the one thing that's not associated with that, my, my only guidance was that, and this is what the MOU part. with that, my, my only guidance was that, and this is what the MOU part was about that I mentioned earlier, was that I'm not sure if the sheriff has decided to follow the employee handbook or not, but the procedure for salary amounts is dependent upon his decision. So do I follow the policy now?
I suggest, call Pat in the morning.
Okay.
Discuss that, she, if she needs the board to, to react before the 20th, I'm sure she'll, she'll make sure that she contacts us, because we don't wanna hinder you not to have deputies in place.
Yes, sir.
Especially if they're qualified, and you feel comfortable with that.
Well, thank you, y'all understood perfectly, I appreciate it.
No, no, so, you, the sense of urgency to Mr. Norvig's point, and I apologize, I didn't want you to.
No, no.
Not realize that we do recognize your sense of urgency.
Yes, sir, I appreciate the guidance, thank you.
Any other public people wanting to speak at the public comment period? Seeing that, I'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to county attorney comments?
Yeah, just one quick comment, Mr. Chairman, the gentleman's not here anymore, but he was talking about Morningview Drive, we actually filed a petition in the general district court today for 2406 Morningview Drive, I assume that's the property he's talking about, pursuant to the new ordinances is our first one, and we actually filed it today, court date is February 1st at 9:15 a.m., we've issued a $1,000 fine, and asked the court to enforce the cleanup.
Mr. Chairman, could we make sure that Mr. Howland connects with the person who made the complaint, the comment tonight, to get that piece of information?
Thank you, Tom, and thank you to the staff for, you know, enforcing the policy that was passed, and Mr. Williams, if you facilitated that, I guess, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Well. The reason he came here tonight was because he wasn't getting the type of response that he thought he should be getting. I got the phone call, and I called Tom, I called Ed. And, as Tom explained, you know, this is a new process for, for staff, but, long and short, there's been some missteps along the way. What I'm recommending is that we get something, you know, in, you know, staff's hands, I don't care who develops it or whatever, as to what the protocols, the steps are gonna be as we go forward with this new ordinance, because it's different from a zoning violation, such that we do carry things in an expeditious fashion, in the manner in which we all hope to see, because, as he pointed out, you know, any lag in time, in, in his particular instance, you know, as has been in other parts of the county, people have suffered for years on this trash issue, they really have. And, we raised expectations here in the county that we were gonna address it through the enactment of our ordinances, inoperable vehicle, the trash ordinance, et cetera. So they're anxious to get relief, so that's why he's here tonight. So it's gonna be, he was very elated that this was going forward, and, and the action that Tom just described is, is taking place.
He, he was aware of the action?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, he's, he's aware of it.
Perfect.
I, I will add one little thing, I'll throw a little wrench into this whole budget discussion. We have a self-help remedy in the code, that we could've already gone and cleaned this up, but we don't have a budget for doing so, so one of the things you need to be thinking about as budget time rolls around is whether you wanna, now, and it's, it's really not budget that's permanently lost, because it allows us to put a lien on the real property, so it's, it's recouped at a minimum at property sale, so you can view it more as a loan than a, than a direct expense, but having said that, we can speed up these trash cleanups dramatically, if in fact, there's some budget money there, we would've already had somebody there and had it cleaned up ourselves and put a lien, Mr. Altman and I used to do this on a regular basis when we, when we worked with the city of Hopewell. And so, one of the things you might wanna talk about is, is budgeting a few dollars, which could then be used by county staff to, to basically go clean it up, and there would be no waiting on court, there would be no court dates, we could just go do it. We just don't have any money to do it right now, so, but that is authorized under the trash and debris ordinance that you adopted.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Any one more? Tom, most of this, if I remember right, when we crafted it, these are initiated by citizen complaints.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, we don't go out looking for them.
Exactly. So, there might be people who interpret, oh, they talked about cleaning up trash and inoperative vehicles, and they didn't do anything about it. And it might be because nobody has called and said, my neighbor next door has 28 inoperative vehicles on his two-acre lot next door.
I think on this Morningview one, the complaints have been coming for three years.
This, this is a longstanding issue, this, this wasn't that where they didn't know they had to report, they'd been complaining a long time.
Okay, no, that's fine.
But, yeah, I think there are people out there that may be waiting for us to do something proactively.
Exactly.
They were waiting after we passed the ordinance, you know, it was communicated back to them, from me, that the county had passed the ordinance, and that action would be taken, they filed the complaints, and then they looked at the inordinate amount of time that was taken to have their issue addressed.
I get it, okay, so that's a separate issue.
Separate issue.
Because what I'm talking about is.
Yeah, I think, I think there probably are citizens out there going, well, when are they gonna take care of this trash issue?
Yeah, people read in the paper that we passed that ordinance, and now.
In this particular subdivision, that wasn't the case.
Okay, I got you, 'cause.
So, let your constituents know if they have a problem, they need to notify the.
Call you, right?
Well, no, call, call David Dameron.
The zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator, if you call zoning administrator, he will then coordinate with me, and we'll, we'll take care of it.
Well, the press is here, maybe she'll make it a big starburst in her paper, so. Any other comments, Tom?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and do this now, if I might, at our last meeting, Mr. Carl Lozer actually asked us to look into the possibility of passing an ordinance in the county that will allow the citizen referendum on anything that the citizens wanted to do, and I asked Tom to look into what the Code of Virginia has said about that, and he's ready to speak to that tonight for the record.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lozer's request, though sensible and probably go in line with what our founding fathers would've anticipated, is not legal in Virginia. The Virginia General Assembly specifically says 24.2684, no referendum shall be placed on a ballot unless specifically authorized by statute or charter, so unless there's a specific state code section that says you can put this item on a referendum, you can't, is a blanket prohibition. So for example, bond issues can, can and must be put on a referendum, there's a specific code section that says it, but if it, if there's not a specific state code section that says this can go on a referendum, then it is blanket prohibition, so we aren't, we don't have the authority from the General Assembly to put anything on the ballot by referendum. And so, we can't do it even if we wanted to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Latchey, and matter of fact, I think you shared that with Mr. Lozer before the meeting, but I guess he still decided to make sure he tried to get us to deal with it, thank you.
And that's all I have.
At this time, we'll move on to item 21, county administrator comments.
Thank you, I just wanna remind everyone that with, there is a joint meeting with the school board on January 20th at 7:00 p.m. in this auditorium, there now is a special meeting at 5:00 p.m. on January 20th also. I also wanna point out that on January 25th is a regular board meeting, on Monday, January 25th, it begins at 6:00 p.m. The board meetings will now begin at 6:00 p.m., unless otherwise stated, which are usually the joint workshops with the school board, which will still begin at 7:00 p.m. So on January 25th, the board has a very full agenda, including you will receive the proposed CIP on that evening, so it will be a very long meeting, starting at 6:00 p.m. on January 25th.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. The board comments? I have one quick one. So not only will we be starting at 6:00 p.m., but one of the things that, that we're gonna do in our new meeting, is we're gonna have a specific time that we, we meet to have public hearings, so that people don't sit in the audience and wait and wait and wait for a public hearings. So we will have that time delineated, and then, you know, we will make sure we meet that time, so that people are there to speak on public hearings, that they're not waiting to sometimes an hour and a half to hour and 45 minutes before we do those, so I like the new approach, I think it'll be much more friendly for the, for the citizens, and we chose 6 o'clock, we know it's difficult sometimes for people to get there, but we think that 6 will give us the ability to do these things, so. Any other comments from the board? Okay, we'll go into closed meetings. Tom, would you mind doing that for me, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I will read it. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters, one matter concerning the salary performance of specific personnel, and whereas pursuant to section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County is hereby authorized to discuss before said matter in closed meeting. That needs to be a motion.
I make that motion.
I'll have a second. All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, 5-0, we're in closed session.
Of the Powhatan Board of Supervisors, an open meeting requests a clerk of the board to conduct a roll call certification, vote of the supervisors to be included in the minutes of this meeting.
Do you certify, to the best of your knowledge, that the only matters discussed in the closed session were public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just conducted? Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Cavill?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Well, now, Chairman, this.
Are you adjourned?
No, we're not adjourned.
No.
So, at this time, Mr. Latchey, would you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, the motion, based on the discussion in the closed session, the motion I would recommend is a motion to approve amendments to the county administrator's employment agreement as embodied on the written document, distributed a copy of which should be included in the minutes, and that the board vote to approve the amended, the agreement as amended.
So moved.
So a motion, and I'll second that motion. All in favor, favors of motion as presented?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Those abstaining?
What's the motion again?
A motion is to approve the contract as presented, as we came out of the session, Mr. Williams.
I thought we had already voted, but that was.
We, we voted.
To bring it in, okay, so, no.
With, motion passes 4-1, any abstention, abstention, excuse me, motion passes 4-1.
And a copy of this needs to be included, so that there's a record of what was adopted.
All right.
That document has never been a, made a public document.
Well, at least the amendments need to be in the minutes, it needs, so what the amendments were. I mean, it's, it's subject to FOIA, so if somebody wanted it, they could get it.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Okay. Still hear the dogs?
We just need.
Okay.
We need at least in the minutes a record of what was the amendments, what the changes were. So, if the minutes reflect the amendments, that's good enough.
Okay.
Just gotta, has to be some record of what happened.
All right. Now, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Dan, we need to see you.